Meeting would like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on August 17. Ask Commissioner Skinner to open us with an invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Father, we know that you are always in control. Father, we ask that you bless those that defend our freedoms, those that are in harm's way, those that take care of us. Father, we ask your blessings on them and their family. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make these decisions for our county and citizens of our county. That you help us make the right decisions, Father. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please stand up for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Good Republic which is standing, nation, God, visible, liberty and justice for all.
The record show we have four of five commissioners present. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the August 3, 2021 meeting. Your binder, if they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have some folks that have asked to speak. I'm going to move those to the part of the agenda where we actually discuss this issue. So instead of everybody speaking in advance, we just want to welcome everybody here. We've got a long agenda, which is unusual for us, but it's okay every now and then. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item has been through the necessary committees to receive the votes to be placed on this consent agenda. So if it meets with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Going to go to, I believe, Commissioner Richardson. Is that correct? Baited agenda, unfinished business.
I make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 21-06, amending the official code of Columbia County, Georgia, Chapter 18, Article 3, permits to become effective the day after the second reading.
Second.
Blocker.
Yes, sir. This is a new permit that we require anytime you will install a private driveway across county property to access to a county roadway. We currently don't have that in place. It was time to start acquiring those permits.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Skinner, I believe you have the question.
Uh, yes. Item B. I make a motion to approve the easement encroachment agreement for 227 Hornsby Lane, continued upon the approval of variance RZ 210801.
Second.
So this is an encroachment agreement, looking, a property owner looking to encroach upon an easement that we have, continued upon commission's approval of a variance that you will be taking up later on tonight.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Skinner, I believe you have the next one as well.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from M1 and R2 to S1 for property located at tax map 051008J for a place of worship and associated uses, subject to the conditions enumerated, the August 5, 2021 Planning Commission report.
Second.
This is the first of two parts. I'll explain both parts while we're here, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to go from an M1, R2 zoning to S1 zoning to allow the construction of a church. Currently, the church owns the property to the south here. That is currently zoned S1. They're asking to have this piece here zoned S1 now. The next part to be voting on is combining the plan for the two pieces into one parcel, basically, to show their plan for the entire parcel. So move from 10 acres to 20 acres if both these next two items pass.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Next item. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to S1 for property located at tax map 0510081 for a place of worship and associated uses, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 5, 2021 Planning Commission.
Second.
That was the second part, the use of whole parcel for the.
Questions? Comments?
I'm aware of talking about sure.
Yes, sir.
With that road, moving that road.
Yes, sir. I'll give you a real quick explanation. The Baker Place Lane is this current road here. Right here is I-20. Bridge crosses here. Sight distance is very bad there. We're looking to relocate Baker Place Lane further away from the intersection in the future. See here, they are showing driveway connections over to that future location. Again, this does require a lot of work, a lot of commission approvals to make it happen. We want to make sure that the property owners are aware of our intent now, prior to getting started.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Next item, VA 210701. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance to Section 90-53, list of lot and structural requirements for property located at tax map 082354, and require that the existing fence with the side setback must be reduced to six foot or less, and also that the existing carport structure must be removed within 60 days. Any replacement structure must receive building permits that must be in accordance with the required building setback and building codes. Also, I make a motion to disapprove the request for the easement encroachment agreement.
Second.
Here you have a property owner who built a carport on the side of their building. They did not get permits from the county to build the structure. The structure does encroach into the setback on the side. They also have built a fence that exceeds our required height limit for residential fencing. Fencing also extends onto Board of Education property. So this was a request to allow a variance to leave the carport where it is, as well as leave a fence above the height. See here, staff did not agree with this, by the recommendation were to remove the carport. No build permits were issued. Does not meet code. HOA did not agree with the variance either. Any questions you may have about it?
The fence on school board property?
It is. Board of Education is aware. They've requested a survey be done and anything found on their property be moved from their property and placed back onto the property.
Questions? Comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Uh, VA 210702. I make a motion to approve the request for various to Section 90-98, list of lot and structural requirements to remove the maximum building setback Peachtree Road at the Section 90-147I3 use provision to permit the location of a drive-through lane along Peachtree Road for the property located at tax map 072A104.
A second.
This area of the county, you have requirements that require the building to be built no further than a certain distance from the road. This parcel here has three road frontages. So you have a North Bel Air Road, then Peachtree Road, and three back here. So they're literally surrounded by three roads. You see here on the map, the red line is where the building would have to extend to to meet all of our requirements. That would make the building extremely large, much larger than was needed. This variance is to allow them to exceed the maximum setbacks from Peachtree. They will meet the North Bel Air. They're also asking for a variance allowing their stacking lane for their drive-through to be on the rear of the building. Code does not allow that to be seen from a road. Again, they have three roads. They have nowhere to hide this thing completely. So staff is in agreement with these recommendations.
Uh, on this, have an issue with it, but this property was developed a long time ago and it's got a lot of landscaping that we intended to have in Evans Town Center and read that they were going to work with the county. Landscape architect to retain as much as this. And I just want to reemphasize how important I think that is. Trees and all the landscaping, much as be used and saved.
Right, Mr. Titus. He's representing the owner. I believe he's in agreement with it. Here to head. Step up to the podium.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Is that a motion?
Uh, yeah. Two-piece.
What I'm talking about. Trying to get some real work done.
Uh, filed for RZ 210801. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map 081610 to reduce the side setbacks for a proposed retaining wall, subject to the conditions enumerated, the August 5, 2021 Planning Commission.
My second.
This is the second part of the encroachment easement that you approved earlier. Looking to build a retaining wall. The red line here shows a retaining wall. There's a slope that runs downhill as he goes this way. By installing a retaining wall, allow more building area on the lot, allow a house that meets the standards of the houses around. I guess comparatively size would match our houses. 10-foot tall at its highest point. Because of that 10-foot tall height, it will require a fence to prevent somebody from falling off of it. So you'll have a 10-foot tall wall at the maximum height, with a 6-foot fence, maximum height on top of that. Your highest point, 16 feet. But this house, this lot sits lower than this lot. So it'll actually kind of block that view of this house looking down on top of the house below it.
Questions?
About the 16-foot tall wall or whatever, or 10-foot wall.
Right. Well, the house will block a lot of it. You can see the height there. Once the wall is built, the wall will be in this location. I lie, not exactly there. Wall will probably be more along the lines of over here, right up within, it's been three foot within the property line. But that area will be, better if I draw it here, but understand it's further over. Of course, that area will be filled in flat, and then down here will be over. So you'll have a house. I'll be stealing my designs.
And here you have.
I'm putting my stamp on that.
Clemson engineering degree, right here. Clemson engineering. Yeah.
If it gets approved, you'll owe me.
Any other questions? Anybody else need to slam Clemson before we vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. Number three. I'll see you on the fourth.
The fifth.
All right, now we have folks who want to speak to the flowing Wells Road light issue. Mr. Dean Thompson. Take your name and address for the record, sir, and take five minutes.
My name is Dean Thompson. I live at 4212 Quail Springs Circle. My property is one of the closest to Augusta Prep Field Lights. It's greatly impacted by the lights in the public address system. I request that you not approve the rezoning request and instead reduce the number of field lighting events from 10 to eight. My reasons are as follows. Under the 2011 rezoning, prep was limited to 10 days per school year. Since the lights were installed in 2012, AP has exceeded this condition four out of the nine years, better than 44% of the time, or 14 total events. Eleven events, well, I won't go through, but condition number four under the 2011 agreement was to not use the lights for any practice. Since 2012, this condition has been violated eight times, four each in the last two years. Condition number six under the 2012 or 2011 agreement will turn off the lights by 10:30, except on rare occasions. AP has violated this condition 11 times. So this doesn't appear to fall into the rare occurrence time for me. Condition number seven was to plant and maintain a significant landscape buffer. February 2014, a needed drainage ditch was dug behind my property that removed several of the landscape buffer plants that were not replaced. In addition, the original plants have not been maintained. During late spring and through summer, the buffer is better. But during fall and winter, the buffer is not adequate. Remaining plantings behind my property have not grown very much. Field elevation is approximately 10 to 12 feet above where the plants were placed behind my property. So the plantings don't provide much buffer. In addition, the buffer does little to minimize the noise, which can be turned up or down for AP's control through their PA system. Is the county in the habit of rewarding businesses who violate the approval conditions by giving them less conditions? I don't believe this is the case. But if you do that here, I would think that's a very bad precedent for the county. Prep requested the lights for Friday night football games in 2011. Typically, they have only four or five Friday night football games in a school year. Eight field lighting events per school year would cover this need completely. But what has changed since the 2011 request and agreed-to conditions? The number of home gains has not changed much, if at all. Of course, they want to use them more often, but at what cost to their neighbors? Have they demonstrated their good faith and followed the existing conditions? They have not. PA system is very loud at times, is not appreciated by this neighbor. AP has not been very responsible in following the 2011 conditions as mentioned above. I have contacted the Columbia County Code Enforcement at least four times over the years, request they enforce the approval conditions from 2011. Instead of enforcing the conditions, they appear to want to get the conditions changed, so they don't have to do anything. That is not appreciated by this taxpayer. Columbia County approved the installation of AP field lights with seven conditions. County needs to step up and enforce those conditions rather than abandon their responsibilities to AP. Why would the county consider rewarding a business not following the original approval? To summarize, there were seven conditions created as part of the 2011 agreement. AP has been in gross violation of the seven conditions year after year with no recourse. To my knowledge, only phone calls were made from Code Enforcement to prep. No fines were ever levied. Eight field lighting events per school year are more than adequate to meet AP's needs. You do approve AP's request for more events. What message are you sending to the rest of the county? Of course, AP ultimately wants unlimited use of their field lights. It just doesn't seem fair for me and my neighbors, peace and quiet in the evening, to be taken away more and more and given to AP. I would certainly hope you, if any commissioners has family or friends with ties to AP, I would certainly hope you excuse yourself for voting on this matter. Lastly, who should I contact when AP violates the conditions? Since past performance tells me it will happen. Any questions?
Um, there was a landscape plan approved back in 2011, I believe. No, Mr. Thompson, at that, but then the way it was presented. I think you said it hadn't been maintained or.
Well, when they dug the ditch, they dug up some of those plants and didn't replant any of those. Go and look at the plantings that they planted. They're not hardly growing any. Not really doing much. Yeah, it has reforested that area, but not the plantings. The plantings haven't. And there, I think they were planted to be evergreen type, so it's full foliage the entire year. The other plants are, they drop their leaves during the fall and winter and not much buffer there.
So there's no evergreen back there?
There's some.
I'm looking at the plan. It does not actually show a dimension on here, and this is a scaled-down version, so I can't. Based on looking at the football field, it's significant. It's 20 or 30 yards based on the football field. If the lines on the football field are right, you have page 465 on your packet that looks like that landscape plan. There would appears to be some sort of ditch to it, but it's not directly against property line. Closer to the field than it is the property line. Kind of shows the ditch.
Well, there was a ditch dug right by the property line.
You can draw.
It was right by the property line. It was right through here. Because the water was coming across the property line onto our property. They dug it to get it over into this area right here where there's a pinhole.
So they came in to do the ditch to divert the water from your property? So if they deleted anything in the buffer, it was keep the water from going on your and your neighbor's property. Is that correct?
Absolutely. But the water was coming from Prep's property onto ours. They're at a higher elevation than we are.
But this helped.
Oh, yes.
Thomas Burnside?
Thomas Burnside, 1304 Buna Vista Road, Augusta, Georgia, 30909. I represent Augusta Prep, and I was here back in 2011 when this matter was originally presented. And the buffer there at the end of the field was basically cleared to build. Did need significant plantings. They were made, there's a large stand of pine trees at the end of the track that has really grown in. It's become very thick. And as I recall, and I'm sure Mr. Thompson can correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe we were called about the ditch. I don't know if it was by him or another property owner, and asked to dig it out and clean it out, which the school did. You know, part of the reason those trees back towards his house are not growing is because the trees in front of them, close to the track, have gotten so big that it just shades that area. And it is hard to grow plants in a ditch, especially when you have to dig it out routinely. Just a bit of history on this. In 2011, the school did build this stadium and had these lights. Sat down with Spring Lakes to negotiate on how many times the lights were. We agreed to install, lights are actually made by Hubble, photometric lights with filters to prevent spillage as much as possible into the running off the field. We agreed to plant a significant landscape buffer, agreed to wait three years before we came back for any number of times that we could do it. And we agreed to consult with Spring Lakes before doing anything. It's been 10 years. We waited longer than three. We gave the buffer plenty of time to grow in. It's gotten quite thick. Seeking now to increase the number of days, but before doing that, we went and sat down with Spring Lakes. Went through it. We negotiated. School would like to use more than the times, but agreed to 18. Reached an agreement, reduced it to writing. Back, Spring Lakes said, we'll come to the meeting if we need to and voice that we have no objection. Think the agreement stands. Hope it says that. So those are just, those are some of the things the school has done right. Okay? We tried to abide by the agreement. We tried to follow the process and be good neighbors and work with Spring Lakes. Obviously, we can't go house to house to house, but we can sit down with the organization and the president, hammer out an agreement, which is exactly. I will say, the paper pointed it out today, the school was started in the 60s. Spring Lakes was developed in the 70s. Houses that are involved were built in the mid 1980s. So when they were purchased and built, thriving school, because I graduated there in 1985, right behind these houses. Not as if we have rolled into the neighborhood of late and changed everything. Didn't have stadium lights then. School's grown, certainly reasonable for seeing that would happen when you buy backing up to a school. Having the open land behind you, but there are some activities taking place. Noise. So it happened. So just looking at it from Prep's perspective, Prep wants to be a good neighbor. At the same time, Prep owns the land. Prep was there first. Prep spent thousands of dollars to build these lights. We've agreed only to use lights 18 times a year. Say it another way, if you wanted to say it in a positive way, say that Prep has agreed not to use the lights 347 days out of every. That seems to be a reason problem hammered out between the school and the neighborhood association. Give and take there. I think they're to be commended for reaching an agreement. Firm the Planning Commission vote, which was 4 to 0 with one of the. The relatively new head of school, Derek Willard, is here and wants to speak to some of the issues. I can tell you that through this process, we've all dusted off the agreement, sat down with parties and gone over it and made sure.
Would just name and address for the record, sir.
Sure. My name's Derek Willard. I'm the head of school at Augusta Prep Parrotory Day School as of July 2019. I live at 28, oh, excuse me. That's the school's address. I live at 3063 Hillsdale Drive, Augusta, Georgia, 30. Chairman, Board, thank you for having me and giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, as a relative newcomer to the state and the area and the school, but responsible entirely for the school's conduct, I was troubled to learn of the log of reported violations reported by Mr. Thompson at the last meeting. I have not personally received a call from the neighborhood or him in my tenure about the lights. That's not to say someone may not have reached out to the AD or someone, but I was not really aware of such a log until the last meeting. I cannot speak for former leadership, but by Mr. Thompson's account, most of the issues he catalogued at the last meeting with conditions 1, 4, 6, and at least 1, 4, and 6, I think occurred before I arrived. So again, I cannot speak to former leadership. It does not excuse any behavior by the school, certainly, but I would like to point that out. I am here to speak for the school going forward. We want to honor that. We want to honor that agreement under my leadership, and we are currently reviewing all the conditions internally to see if we can find ways to improve. As Thomas said, we want to be a good neighbor. If there are issues with the buffer, we should certainly address them. I can personally vouch, though, that in particular, some of the tall cedars that were planted up and around the track have fully matured. Some of those trees are fifteen, twenty feet high and do sit up above the elevation of his home. If indeed we've taken some out, we can always put more in. Also, since under my arrival, as Thomas said, we undertook negotiations with the neighborhood in good faith. We appreciate the flexibility as a school. And I mean flexibility in particular for our parents and our visitors' parents. If you think about it, we are not only talking about football, but we're talking about spring men's and women's soccer games. And Prep was a soccer school before it was a football school, just didn't or couldn't afford lights at the time. Many of our visiting teams must travel several hours from rural Georgia after the school day to play at a time that does not interfere, number one, with classroom learning, and number two, provides a chance for parents to see the event. So night games are not only convenient to parents who work, parents here in Columbia County and other counties, but they're also convenient, they're also important parts of community spirit in a school. It's part of being a vibrant school, not just Friday night lights, but Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday night lights for soccer, too. So we look at Prep as an asset to Columbia County, as an asset to the CSRA. We think that a vibrant Prep will be here for the next sixty years. We don't want to abuse the equipment we have and the impact it has on our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We appreciate your consideration in approving the request. Questions?
Sir, since light seems to be part of the issue, do you recall at what angle the lights are directed at on the field?
I don't know the specific physics on that. My understanding from...
Burnside said they had the lights.
Yeah, I would imagine they're down.
My understanding, there was some analysis done of light levels and direction there.
Yeah, and as part of that analysis, has anyone ever done a lumen measure on the other side of the trees that you have planted and...
I don't know the last time that was done. I believe there are some provisions, or there were some provisions for that during the installation.
Property line, whatever, I mean naturally you're going to see light, but...
There's a seven. There is a photometric survey here. Tough to read. It's tiny, it's old, but I can't read it.
That exhibit D?
It looks like zero point something on the property lines, whereas you're having thirty, thirty fours, fifties on the football field. That's two thousand and eleven. Tough to read.
So, feel like there needs to be some improvement? Buffer that's there, I mean, you've been back there and looked at it, see some trees or whatever that were there?
I understand what Mr. Thompson's talking about. I wasn't here for the drainage work, but if we can improve the buffer, that seems a small price to pay in terms of being a good neighbor.
As far as the, on, pressing, that would fall under the noise ordinance, which is...
Eleven o'clock P.M. Eleven P.M. has to be found unreasonable. No specific level that has to be exceeded to be considered a violation, just has to be found unreasonable.
And with rare exception, we're supposed to be concluded by ten thirty P.M.
Practice, obviously, large number, but certain times that y'all try and say it or not do?
Again, I don't know the dates by heart. I think it would be unusual for us to attempt that. The only thing I can think of, particularly in the last twelve to eighteen months, COVID created havoc with schedules last year. I don't want to use COVID as an excuse for, you know, violating a condition, but we may have had to take advantage of that, given the season was so greatly pushed back.
And Matt, just to be clear, this is with all the same conditions, we're talking about going from eight to eighteen?
Ten, ten to eighteen. Eight was a request.
Ten, eighteen, sorry.
Correct. Great. Everything, all there was seven conditions as everyone has agreed to, or has agreed there are seven conditions. And issue one says ten days, they were asking to change it to eighteen. Painting conditions stayed the same.
My question is, you can, if this is approved, eighteen suffice?
Yes, sir. And I'm...
I'm concerned that the, what I heard was there were a lot of violations of our conditions. I think I was on the committee when they made, several of us were. That concerns me, that we break a condition when everybody tries to work together, including your neighbor. And I want to make sure that could suffice eighteen.
Yes, sir.
And we won't be hearing it again, that we need twenty-five.
I believe when we entered negotiations, we were confident it would and that we would lock that in for ten years.
Any questions? Comments?
What is a what if? What if Mr. Thompson calls and says, hey, we're at twenty-five? What happens at that? What is our options at that point?
That would be a code violation, zoning violation, and take him to court over it.
Call that a legal matter.
That's right. It becomes a legal matter.
I get that.
Basically, we arrange a meeting with the judge. The judge determines what happens.
Were you at the meeting that y'all had with Spring Lakes?
No, sir, I wasn't. I believe Thomas and my athletic director were.
How many people were at that meeting? Was it just the board of directors or a lot of people in the community? Anybody know? Yeah? Okay, so we don't know.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Willard. Here, the chance. Heard some debate. Is there a motion to be made?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to revise the existing conditions of RZ one one oh eight oh one. It's set forth in the August fifth, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission Report for Tax Map oh seven nine oh six six with the condition that we look at the buffer and plant some more evergreens or whatever's necessary to help your neighbor.
Second? We need to be more specific with that?
You're going to need to have a specific, subject to staff approval of buffer changes.
Yeah, we would probably require, I think what we would probably ask, and Thomas is all right with this, we would ask for a landscape plan and that staff approve the landscape plan. Y'all be willing to do that?
I'll amend my motion to add that, that it has to be approved by staff, landscape folks come in there. It's eighteen, all other conditions are the same except the one I just added. Nothing else changes.
Patrice, you got that?
Yes, sir. Feel good.
All right, is a motion on the floor? Second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
File RZ two one oh eight oh three. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD plan revision for a property located at Tax Map oh seven eight one one six D to add a tattoo parlor to the permitted use for, uses for the subject property.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Died for my lack of second.
Yes, sir. This is a request to add a condition use for tattoo parlor. Is that basically making a permitted use in this area here? Currently, they're operating a, called a boutique type, or offering a boutique type tattoo service, or wanting to add that, I'm sorry, not offering it. They're doing microblading type services, spa type services. They wanted to add this type tattoo service as well.
We accept spouses. If you will just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shane Neal, and address is one five seven Canton Park Ave, Evans, Georgia.
Difference between, oh, it's probably on our side, but boutique, whatever tattoo, what is the...
Before he touches that, I'll tell you, from our standpoint, it doesn't matter what kind of tattoo it is. A tattoo is a tattoo. It's just got to be a tattoo parlor designation on our side. Call it boutique, but it still doesn't matter. If you say tattoo, fine lines or immaculate ink or anybody else has the right to use that space if you grant that. So I just want to throw that out there while he explains.
Yes, sir. So I think the boutique style, which is a word choice to kind of give a picture of the environment that would be created, it's not, you know, like hardcore, heavy metal style thing. It's very much a spa setting. It's centered on beauty. It's centered on women, primarily ages thirty and above. So the description was not to, I guess, lighten the severity of a tattoo, but to just give a better idea of the customer base it would be serving and the style that would be created inside the salon.
On, oh, have, you're doing whatever.
Yes, sir. So currently, we work, well, my wife works, I have another building in Evans, and we're working to purchase the building at two five six nine. So we'll occupy half the building, hopefully rent half of the building to a renter, and then once we do that, we're going to renovate up half of that, half of that building there. Be it the Columbia environmental health and safety.
Purchasing?
We are purchasing. At least, we have it under contract. That's the plan.
Questions? Second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Chair next, we have RZ two one oh eight oh four. I make a motion to approve the request for a major S one plan revision for property located at Tax Map oh eight two B, one five eight E, to eliminate lot lines for proposed senior cottage, subject to conditions, subject to the following conditions. Environmental, body, residential living structure cottages shall not be converted to assisted living structures unless they meet the provisions of the ordinance, Columbia County Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty-two, Flood Section forty-two through forty-six. Standard for critical facilities, critical facilities shall not be located in the hundred year floodplain or the five hundred year floodplain. Engineering services, drainage behind the existing retaining walls, existing retaining walls located on the western side, Tax Map oh eight two B, parcel one five eight E, shall be repaired in conjunction with the development plan for twenty-two hundred Inaco Hall Drive. Columbia County will not issue permit services. Either a piping system or concrete lines swell above the walls according to the approved development plans for the Indigo Hall Phase One is required to remedy the issue. Building standards, a stamped letter from a structural professional engineer will be required once a wall has been assessed and determined it meets or exceeds the structural design. Planning buffers must be undisturbed and supplemental with additional plantings as required to create an opaque screen. There shall be no grading to the buffer areas.
All right.
Second?
I'll second. I'll second. With the question, is the certificate of occupancy going to be held in advance? All of the conditions that were... Mr. Rick?
If I heard correctly, he, Kenner, stated that we will not issue any new permits for the site until the painting wall that has issues now is, I believe he said, I'm going to read what he said. There are piping system or concrete lines swell above the walls according to the approved development plan for Indigo Phase One is required to remedy the issue. So, what I understand, until they fix all their issues with their existing retaining wall, we will not issue any new permits.
That's correct. But once they're fixed...
Correct. That's the recommendation I heard, or that's the condition I heard.
Patrice, do you have that? You have like a quizzical look on your face.
Yes, that's...
Sure that they completed the first phase before they were allowed to start the second phase, for the most part, oversimplifying. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Item RZ two one oh eight oh five, make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD zoning for property located at Tax Map oh eight one B nine four zero to reduce building setbacks to the extent necessary to allow the proposed pool and retaining wall set forth in the submitted plans, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August fifth, two thousand and twenty-one Planning Commission Report.
I'll second.
This is a request, building a pool. However, as you see, this property here is frungus, so they are looking to install the pool, this area. My actual location might be off, but...
That's tight.
Sir?
That is tight.
Yes, sir. So basically, what this does is, while this is the side yard for the residents, it appears to be a front yard from across the street. However, they do have letters of support from their neighbors. The HOA has approved this as well. Does have some requirements. They have to have a landscape plan to hide this pool from camelback court. There's a variance on major PUD revision to allow the pool to be... Do some in a building setback for proposed pool and associated site work. Basically, we're allowing it to go down to a ten foot side yard, which is... I call it their side yard, but it's...
I get it.
By definition, it's a front yard because it has road frontage. That's where this comes into play.
Questions? Comments? Can we draw?
Y'all can't draw. So this is, this is curb line. Almost, this is hard for me to read, too, here. That there is right-of-way line. That's going to be that back line, that back line. This will follow that line right there.
Following.
That's... And then, area here, landscaped here, so this is, that's their property. This area here is county right-of-way, and I'm sorry, this is private property, this is Westlake. That's Westlake HOA Road. That's Westlake HOA Road property.
Questions? Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Next is File RZ 210806. I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for a massage for a property located at Tax Map 072B 126 with the condition, this will be the only unit within this building.
Clear, fine. So there's multiple suites in this building. You only want to allow one massage license per building.
Per building.
Matter which suite is in, as long as it's one per building.
What? Oh, that's fine.
You're okay?
Dude, you're non-verbals.
Sometimes we have to think about things.
Yeah. I don't want to put you out.
No, no. It's fine. I'd say something otherwise.
All right. There a second?
Do we, do we need to say something otherwise?
Nope, nope.
Cover it.
We got, I think, Patrice.
Okay, okay.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand?
File VA 210801. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance to Section 74-82D lots and 90-131-5C2 general for the property located at Tax Map 081008 with any improvements located within the county right-of-way shall be removed within sixty days.
Hiltar? All right, had you circled to speak at the next one, so.
Yeah, well, we kind of go together, if that's okay. My name is Rachelle Hitzler, 425 Water Oak Lane, Martinez, Georgia. We received a notice, how we got here tonight? We received a notice from the code enforcement, code enforcement instructing us to apply for a variance so that we could obtain permission to keep the driveway at the rear of our property. The next one, you'll hear, ours is not paved. Our next-door neighbor at 423, she paved hers. That's what brought this on. We understand that the current law restricts us from having access from within our subdivision on Lake Two and also to Stevens Creek. But we also read over it, and we, it reads that you can grant us permission to keep said driveway if we prove that it causes an undue harmship to the owners due to topographic or dimensional disadvantage. Our cul-de-sac was built in 1980, and at the time, the code required an eighty-foot cul-de-sac. Somehow, the code was not met, and ours is only fifty-five foot. It's led to a dimensional disadvantage that we have dealt with almost on a daily basis since moving in four years ago. There are seven residences that affect, that are affected. We have three senior household and four multi-households with multi-children. When a vehicle's parked either on the street or in the cul-de-sacs, the school buses aren't able to pick up or drop off the eight children that live on the street. Most of the school buses are forty to forty-two feet in length, and it's hard to even maneuver when there's not a car in there. And so the vehicles parked, it's been about fifteen days per month that there's a car in the cul-de-sac due to either repairs or someone parking the car, visiting a family member or something. And sometimes, if there's a repair work being done, it can last for months.
Repair work on a car on the street?
Oh, no, repair on homes.
Homes.
When there's a roof or, we had a neighbor that half their house was knocked out, and it took about six months. So there was constantly vehicles in the cul-de-sac. There have been debris from certain storms like back in 2017. Our road was blocked. The only access out was actually Judy's at the time because we didn't have our driveway in place. But the same thing goes with fire trucks has been, that and EMS vehicles. They've been called out and to get an EMS vehicle and a fire truck. They've had to go back around to Stevens Creek to access Judy, well, our next-door neighbor's property. There's a fire hydrant right outside on Stevens Creek, so they were able to pull a hose and get the fire. It was pretty easy that way. Also, utility vehicles or garbage trucks, anything that's big can't fit in the cul-de-sac when we have those vehicles in there. Currently, the neighbors have used these driveways to come back into the neighborhood walking. They don't have a problem with it. So for hers, she'd asked me to say, she had a death in the family. Hers, her driveway, she has health issues, so she carries her trash can out to Stevens Creek via that driveway. And then, she has her pool maintained. That's the way that the pool guy enters and exits. So because there's been at times he couldn't get to it because of vehicles in the cul-de-sac. For ours, we had tree clearing in 2016, an installation of septic tank in 2016 as well. And we plan to have a pool installed in March, April, as soon as they come out and do it. And a three, also our three-car garage right after the pool's installed. So that has been immensely helpful to maintain our septic tank and to have the vehicles pull through the back instead of through our front yard. Last time, originally, it was going to be, it was recommended to approval, but the board said that we was going to set a precedence if they allowed us to have it. And I would say, I strongly disagree. And the reason I say each variance request should be taken on a case-by-case basis. Most people that come aren't gonna have a fifty-five-foot cul-de-sac to deal with. And it doesn't mean just because you approved ours, you would have to approve theirs. It should be demonstrated on a case-by-case basis. And we've proven that there is a definite dimensional disadvantage. Also, we noticed that, we asked permission. And when I called, we're the first, I guess, to ask permission. There's one on Deer Run, and they're permanent, they have an access from their subdivision and also another one that's paved out to North Bel Air, which is much busier than what we're asking for. That's why we didn't, anyway. We didn't think it would be a problem, but they just don't ask permission. And the county doesn't really do anything to close off those driveways after there's construction or whatever that was being done. And we would be glad with the new driveway encroachment ordinance. We're more than happy to adhere to any standards, feet wet, type, get the proper permits. We'll do whatever it needs to be done. Right now, Stevens Creek Road operates, it's labeled a arterial road, but in the recommendation, it said it acts more like a local road. There's fourteen driveways, including the ones that are subdivision on there. So I don't think adding two more would be that big of a hassle. So we are requesting approval with the stipulation that we get the proper permits, which I know our neighbor at 423 did not. She took liberty to go ahead and add it without asking permission. And also to adhere to any county guidelines for the type of driveway, however you guys want it done. We would be glad to do that. Any questions?
The only question I had, and she's not here.
She is not. She had a death in the family, so she asked me to speak on her. Hence why I was like, I'll speak for both. So she was flying out.
You know, when I read through it, the only concern I had was when they built the, whatever the construction went down, it was specifically stated that this had to be closed off. And instead of doing so, she just paved it. So you think, well.
She did. And I'm the reason that we're here tonight. I saw her pave it, so I called and said, hey, she has a paved driveway. Can I get one too?
So she's throwing you under the bus?
So, yeah, because we were told, you know, that we could keep it in as long as we were having work done. And then, we were supposed to close it off after we got done with our construction. And I got really excited when I saw her pave. So I'm the reason we're here. And then, we were asked, we were, it was called to us to just request a variance, go and, you know, give your case and see what happens.
Well, obviously, we can't quiz her because she's not here. But also, we understand death in the family, a lot of good things. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So this, the, of course, this is just the first one. This is not the second one. The motion was to disapprove. So if we vote against that, then it's approved?
No. I think you'd have to make a, another, so you have a motion to disapprove. If you struck that down, you would have to have another motion to approve the variance.
They voted down or asked for it?
Correct.
But you need to, you need to have a formal approval. Not just not approve, to disapprove.
I asked. Where you are?
The vote for the motion is a motion, is a vote to disapprove.
Currently, is the motion, I mean, maybe it would help y'all to figure out where your votes are, but it's a motion to disapprove, and you could take a vote on it.
On a second.
Where it lands, and then if it fails, someone else give a different.
Not a second?
Buddy, second.
Second.
I'm inclined to work with them. So there's a motion, the second on the floor. All in favor of disapproving the request, raise your right hand? Opposed? We have the next one.
File. VA 210802. Make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance to Section 74-82D lots 90-15C2 in general for the property located at Tax Map 081E 007 and any improvements located within the county right-of-way shall be removed within sixty days.
Second?
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? Motion carries?
Goes to work on her pool driveway. Can she get that temporary driveway to work on that?
With our new driveway permit that y'all just approved tonight, she can go through the driveway permit application to get a temporary driveway?
They get a construction driveway.
I hope that's a consolation.
They'll have to re-vote.
Yeah. I think it was voted down, unfortunately.
File VA 210804. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, Section 90-144 placement of buildings and structures for the property located at Tax Map 082K 126A subject to the conditions enumerated in August 5th, 2021 Planning Commission.
Second?
Fence, eight, allow, allow an eight-foot fence.
Okay. Excuse me.
Your motion's behind. It's just telling you what you're proving, an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot.
Hey, I'm in my motion. I did not attend that. Make a motion. Yes, do I need to deny this if I want six-foot?
Do you have a second on that first one?
No.
Okay, so.
That's for my lack of second.
Amend your motion.
Okay. I'm in my motion.
Disapprove the variance request?
Yes.
That's all you have to do, because six-foot is the code. So if you disprove the variance, if you disprove the variance request, they can only bill six-foot.
Disapprove the variance for, to Section 90-144 placement of buildings and structures for the property located at Tax Map 082K 126A subject to the conditions enumerated in August 5th, 2021 Planning Commission.
Second?
This was a request to exceed our code of six-foot, to allow an eight-foot fence. Request was due to topography. You have neighbors who have opposed it heavily. Others to the commission stating that the topography did not warrant it. I believe staff looked at it as well, and it felt the same way.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries? These legal matters.
Illegal matters.
None that we can talk about. Any public comments, participation? Have an executive session item, which we can deal with right now. Commissioner Rich? Up on that?
I make a motion to $187,882.50 housing mark development company, Parcel 069001J right-of-way pumping, pre-easement, Bison South Parkway Road, Biden Park.
Second?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries? I believe that's it. Any other motions?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand? We're adjourned.